Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the June 23rd, 2014 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, Commissioner Pettis-Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis?
Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that you've given us, for the sunshine we've enjoyed. Father, we're thankful for this county and what we have here. We ask that you give us the ability, as we look at the business of this county, that you guide us and you direct us. We're so thankful for all the many blessings that we have, and may we always remember that the blessings that we do enjoy come from you. Ask that you watch over us, direct us, and guide us. We offer this prayer in your Son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call the row gal, please.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis-Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time, we need to approve the minutes of our May 27th meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I do so make the motion that we approve those minutes.
For the motion to approve.
Second motion.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, the motion carries. Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
No, sir.
Item number six on our agenda is waiver request. Item A, Tom Cribs, is requesting a waiver to the fire hydrant distance requirements for property located at 10994 Rockvale Road. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Rockvale Road. The applicant is proposing to subdivide two lots on the west side of the existing house, and you can see that from the location map on the agenda materials that we provided. You can see that, the location of that house there. While there is a hydrant at the corner of Jackson Ridge Road and Rockvale Road, one of the lots, when they create them, may not be within 1,000 feet. It's going to be very close. The applicant and their surveyor, basically the surveyor, said that you might want to go ahead and do this just to be on the safe side. So when they do make this subdivision, if it turns out that it is not within 1,000 feet, they don't have to go back through the waiver process. CUD has indicated that the water line in the area will not support another fire hydrant, which brings the reason for this request here today. I'm not sure if the applicant is present or not, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. May I guess?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Any questions for South? You the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Name and address, please, Mr. Chairman.
Tom Cribs, 4735 Scottus Drive, Murfreesboro, 37128.
Thank you. Any comments?
That's true.
Is this your residence?
It is not. I just represent the seller of the property, Rich Ciccoloni.
Doug, did you tell us what the size of the lots were, what's they're divided?
They'll be roughly four acres apiece.
And so there's no plan to further subdivide? It's just going to remain two four-acre tracts?
Just two four-acre tracts out of the eight, and Mr. Ciccoloni plans to build on one of those himself. And that's next door to his existing property.
Does he plan to sell these? Is that, or sell one, or is it part of the family?
It's a part of the family.
Oh, okay.
At this point, would like to do his own personal home, and then on the other one, just really hasn't made a decision yet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the request and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven, submitted for preliminary plan approval. Item A, Pembroke Farms, item number is 14-1004, 84 lots on 61.14 acres, zoned residential medium density, located along Stewart's Creek Road. David Alcorn is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Stewart's Creek Road. The applicant is proposing to develop an 84-lot subdivision, which will be served by a step system. You can see the copy of the preliminary plan in your agenda material and also on your screen. There are a few comments. Most of the comments have been addressed that we had. There are a couple things just to point out. The first being lots 35 through 38, right in here off the cul-de-sac off of Hyattis Court. You can see there's quite a bit of topography on these lots. When we see a final plat on this, these are going to have to be marked as critical lots, for lack of a better word. Essentially, they're going to need to see a plot plan of the properties before they are issued building permits, just because of the topography of the property. This plan does not have any phasing, that you can see right here. I talked with the applicant's design engineer, Mr. Jamie Reed, who is present. They are planning on doing some phasing. Just at the time when they submitted this, they weren't sure still that what the phases were going to be, but this will be a phased subdivision. Also, as part of our new regulations for preliminary plans, we do require documentation from both the electric and water providers that they will be able to service this property. That's something that we know is forthcoming. We don't have it in our files yet, but it is something that they'll need to provide to us. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hill for any comments he may have on the engineering side.
Like Doug said, in the rear of this property, around lots, well, 35 through 38, and then also there's lots 39 through 45 there. You can see that's kind of the base of a pretty large hill that goes up. There's a lot of elevation change, and as Doug said, we'll mark those as critical lots, which we've done that once before, and we're going to start doing that more on lots that look like they could be an issue. Instead of trying to guess at it at this phase, basically get the design engineer to go in at the more critical time when the builders actually bought the lot and kind of have an idea of exactly what's going to happen. So that'll help us from a drainage scheme and also from erosion and sediment control. So those lots up there, I was asked before the meeting about the grade of the road there on that cul-de-sac there in Hyattis Court. In the back, it's 12 percent, so it's pretty steep, but that is our, that's the maximum in our regulation. So just so you know, we looked at that pretty hard, and we could have asked that the applicant lower the grade of that road, but on paper, that looks okay, but what ends up happening is you basically cut into the hill to get the road down, and then the lots are really steep. And so then you end up having to just bring all that back, and most of the time, it's rock, so you just end up blasting this whole thing back. And so I feel pretty comfortable with this. And the design engineer and I have spent a lot of time looking at this plan. As you can see, lot 83 there on Stewart's Creek Road, there's a large detention pond, and the design engineer and I have looked at that, and this is actually going to help an existing drainage issue out there where water's going over the road. We're going to be able to kind of manage that a lot better. That's a three-and-a-half acre detention pond, so it meets all of our new stormwater regs and quality regs and all that stuff. And then he hasn't finalized all those designs yet, and with our new plan, he doesn't have to, but he's getting close to that, so.
When you flag, when you flag these critical, does that flag them for David also?
It does. It does. And it'll be on the final plat.
What's the process with that critical? What happens if someone, as this thing develops, what happens with that critical tag?
Somebody would come in to get a building permit, and if they didn't have that critical lot, that plot plan for that, let's say lot 37, using an example, somebody come in and just want to pull the building permit, they'd go to building codes, and David's records would show that that lot needs a plot plan. If they didn't have that, we would send them to the design engineer. They would go work out that plan, say, "We want to put the house here, driveway here," and, you know, kind of give the dimensions of the house. And the engineer would kind of show the grading of the lot. He would send that up to our office. We would look at it and approve it, and then give it to David.
So the planning department would have to approve that individual lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In our notes, you only listed those upper four lots, but Eric, when you were speaking, you mentioned seven lower lots. Are you going to include those as well?
The design engineer, we've kind of been back and forth talking about 39 through 45, just because there's so much gradient from the front of the back to the lot, and so we hadn't decided finally yet. And that's, when we kind of get into it, and he gives me a few more numbers, we'll decide. And that'll really be something we determine on the final plat for each phase. But I wanted to make sure you guys knew we're looking at that now.
Can we talk about ingress and egress? I see one main entrance on Pembroke Farms. I see a stubout to the south. What is that? What's going on there?
In the original design...
This is undeveloped, that's undeveloped land just south of that, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The original design submitted actually had Flamingo Drive stubbing out and Miramar Court stubbing out. Now, Miramar Court stubs into the back of a lot. There's a subdivision just to the north of here. And so it wasn't a practical stub. There was just, there's already a house there, established, you know, one-acre lot subdivisions over there. And then Flamingo Drive, that stub, it didn't align well with the property line, and also Stewart's Creek Road makes a 90-degree bend just down the road here, and so it's not that far. So it didn't, it just didn't come across as a very useful stub, and it didn't align with the property lines very well. So we asked the engineer to look at that, and he took those off. We feel better about this. Now, this property to the south, it is undeveloped, and it is a, that's a good place for a stub. But to the north, there just wasn't a really good option for a stub.
What about access around or to the side of the detention pond? Do you, will you have anything?
Well, it'll have road frontage on Stewart's Creek Road.
It'll have road frontage? Okay, okay.
Now, and actually, just to clarify, the low point for this, well, I'm not going to say the low point, the area under the road in frontage in front of this development, that water goes under, there's a 36-inch pipe down close to lot one, okay? Which the detention pond's at lot 83. That is, was basically a bad design by the county a long time ago. They put the pipe in at the wrong spot. And so now, all the drainage across the road is designed for it, and it'll work once we get it there. And so they had to do a little bit of trickeration there to get everything to work. But actually, it's, it does a really good thing. It's, I think it's going to relieve some flooding issues down the road to the north. And so I think this thing is going to be very useful for drainage in the area. And outside of all of that, it meets all of our requirements.
Eric, I know you know this, and you probably touched on it a little bit, but, you know, emergency management always cautions us against the large subdivision with one, you know, way in, one way out. So you've racked your brain, and there's no other good option? Yeah, Jamie's got to come in.
I'm sorry. I might be able to, maybe to help answer that, because you alluded to that earlier. We're actually looking at designing the stuff to the south. I've already got a layout done on the south, and actually, I was about to schedule something to meet with Eric and Doug and stuff this next week, but we've already got another design with tying to that that ties back to the main road up front.
That property to the south is, will eventually be part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we're looking at preliminary engineering plans and stuff right now.
So you're talking about coming at the bottom of the step system right there, Jamie? And for this next subdivision where this stub comes in right here off of Royal, and then tying that in?
Tying that into Royal, and then tying it back into Stewart's Creek Road. So it'll be able to loop around, and plus, on that one, I think I've got another stub to an adjacent property on it also. It's a smaller track. It comes back, it's a little rectangle track, but it ties into this, majority of this portion of this property.
Now, these down on the right-hand side, the 39 through 46 or whatever, you're showing, I guess, a building site there, but 35 through 38 right there, I mean, where is the building site? Is there a building site?
Yeah, the whole, does yours not have a setback line around? Yeah, the whole thing?
It's got setback, yeah.
Yeah. The whole, the whole thing is a buildable site. I mean, it just depends on where they put it, and whenever they bring us their house plans, we do this all over the state, and a lot of different cities require this on critical lots and stuff. We just, they'll bring us a building plan, the builder will bring us their house plans, and we'll show the house on this lot with the driveway and the grades, and if it needs retaining walls, we'll show retaining walls and silt fence and stormwater management stuff like that and stuff on the critical lots, on each, on each of the lots. And Eric's right, I've revised my plans. I think it's 45 through 35, something like, yeah.
Well, the step system's not going to be an issue, but the, you know, water over driveways could be an issue, water over, of course, definitely not overheating in air units and stuff. I mean, we're taking the whole house out of that situation, but you're saying part of the yard or something could be, could be underwater at one point.
No. You're talking about these high, the high lots? No.
No?
Hmm. Not unless somebody breaks a bar. It's a real steep, yeah, it falls from one end to the other, and then, to me, it lends itself good for basement houses. I mean, you'll come in down at the low end, you'll go in the basement house.
I was thinking the other way. This, all right, all right.
Right. The grade's the only reason for the critical lots on these.
Yeah, it's starting up here, and these numbers are kind of hard to read, but you can see it starts at about 724 or so, 726 right in this area, and when you get down to, down here, you're in the six...
Oh, I got you now. Yeah.
Six thirties or something like that.
Eighty-five feet across this lot.
Jamie, have you all talked at all about, do you even know like where you're going to start building at? Like you're going to go to the back?
Well, yeah, it would be this first, and I apologize, the developer was out on vacation last week, so I couldn't get the phasing done for Doug, but it would, typically, they're going to do what they've been doing, is the 30 lots, so it's, was it, they'll probably do the 25 to 30 up front here, and then engulf the CUD step system along with the detention pond and probably those first two cul-de-sacs.
The reason that I ask is because, you know, these same people are going to be competing with, you know, construction traffic. And so I'm just curious about if you've thought about how you're going to do that, how you're going to deal with that.
Yes. Well, if they get this other section down here at the bottom, and if they, you know, go with it, they're going to team it up with this step system here, and they'll, as far as...
So there's no good way to do an access road?
No, I'm dealing with the same thing in Laverne on one. I've got one access going through the property with, there's only one way in and one way out on that. Eventually, it'll tie to other tracks, but as of right now, I've only got one way in and one way out.
Jamie's lot 83, a buildable lot with a detention pond only?
No, no, it's not a buildable lot. And we made it extra larger, I guess is the better term, for it, and deeper to handle this drainage issue they've got out there. Right now, right in front of that pond is where all the water, if the whole area built up, it over tops the road there, but the pipe is on down the road in front of the step system lot, so it's...
See, it's got a driveway that goes to Stewart's Creek Road, right? Is it going to be closed off?
Yeah, that's going to all be taken, yeah, that'll be taken out, that little, the detention pond, all that'll be graded and everything.
And the barns?
Yes, sir, they're all gone as part of the construction plans.
So everything, I'm concerned about the culvert under the Stewart's Creek. Looking at the elevations, it looks like everything flows from north to south to that 36-inch pipe?
It goes, no, well, it goes east to west, all the way down from the back of the subdivision up front to the, to the pond, to the low point where that pond is. And then it actually drains, and that, there's a roadside ditch that it builds up, and it goes down, and it ties into that 36-inch pipe. I've got a design where it falls out, and it, there's slope to everything.
Okay.
The only, the only thing we're concerned about with the road is fix the road drainage that doesn't drain now. Between the detention pond berm and the pavement being lower.
Yeah.
We're going to, that's what Dave and I, I mean, Eric and I are working with, trying to solve the problem in the road.
Who's we? Is that the county?
Greg.
Okay. So that's a county fix, not a developed fix?
Yeah, they're going to have to put a pipe under there.
Yeah, we'll look at that. And Mike on your screen, you can see this, see this contour right here on lot 83?
Yeah.
That's the low, existing low contour, and water ponds there, and then it over tops a little higher right through here and goes down to this pipe.
So where would a new pipe be?
There won't be a new pipe. This existing pipe will remain, but what will happen was the design, the pond will be designed in a way, currently, when this fills up and water finally starts breaking down to this 36-inch pipe, it also starts breaking over the road. So the new design of the pond, there'll be more of a berm here, and so, and the outlet structure will be designed in a way that as water fills up in the pond, it will flow down through a large pipe that'll go to the existing pipe. So water won't be able to go across the road here anymore.
And so that, that relief pipe will then be where? On the side of lot 82?
Behind, behind lot one.
Right.
It'll go all the way behind lot one, under the, under our proposed road, behind, from 82, behind, on the rear of 82, all the way to the rear of lot one.
The outlet structure will be where that hand is on the screen. It'll come down, it'll parallel the road.
Okay. So it's not an, it won't be open ditch? It'll be?
No, it's a 36-inch.
Okay.
Concrete pipe.
Let pipe, Eric, be on the homeowner of one and 82, or will it be on the roadside of one or 82?
It'll be in a drainage easement on the lots outside of the roadway.
Outside, so.
Yes, outside the roadway.
So if he goes in there to dig a big hole or something, he won't, won't be able to hit it?
No. That's labeled an easement.
How difficult is this going to be to maintain from, homeowner association is going to take care of it, you know? Or their responsibility afterwards? So that's when we usually have problems zone down, when things kind of silt up and stuff, and so what kind of...
The good news is, now, with our stormwater requirements, we require a maintenance agreement to be signed before we release lots. The developer has to sign up before he even gives it to the HOA to do a maintenance agreement that we get recorded. I mean, it's an official document that says, no matter what, at the end of the day, you're responsible. Now, what happens is typically...
For how long?
Forever.
Okay.
So, and then at a certain point, they typically sign that over to the HOA, and then at that point, I mean, you're, you're, it's as good as the HOA is. But there is something, I mean, legally, I think it's pretty tight, and we've, and that's a common document throughout the state or throughout the country now, really, that gets used a lot. So I feel a lot better about that now than I used to when it was just kind of a agreement, you know, just a verbal agreement.
So what happens when homeowner one or 82 decides they want to put a pool in?
We don't know.
I can't? Well, well, no, they can put a pool in. They've got...
Not on that side.
Yeah, just not on that side. It's a 20-foot easement, it could be, I mean, Middle Tennessee Electric's got the same 20-foot easement. They can't put it in there. This is just the drainage, so this is a shared easement with people. It's a drainage and electric and whatnot.
And anytime that somebody in the county comes in on a lot like this and wants to build a pool or a detached garage or something, they come to our office, that's what we check for. We look for these things.
Eric, I'm having trouble picturing where this site is on Stewart's Creek Road. We don't have a location.
You know where Stewart's Bend? Just past Travis Estates, going out about a mile past Travis Estates on the left. There's existing...
I didn't realize there were any hills in that area.
Yeah, it's, there we go. On your screen.
Jim, there's one on your, the same thing's on your screen now, if you want to look at that.
This is Travis Estates here and Stewart's Creek Farms, I guess. Stewart's Creek Springs.
Did you guys have, did staff have any comments?
Really, the only comments that we had, we did have a few. The ones that I went over at the very beginning were the ones that we still have some issues with about the phasing of the plan and then the documentation from electric and water providers. The actual plan itself, we thought was in good order. Of course, they've taken care of some of the other comments we had about the access to the north and everything.
And we, I will say this, I'll give Jamie a little credit, I don't like to do that, but I'll give him a little credit. We, he and I have spent a lot of time on this. I mean, he brought this in, you know, and by the book, he didn't really have to do that, you know, that it's not required that he show us the construction drawings before this phase. And so he started on the front end and brought this in, and we've spent a lot of time looking at drainage and layout, and he's been good to work with. So I mean, it's, I just want you all to know this isn't something that we've just glanced at. I mean, we've, he and I have spent a pretty good bit of time on this thing, looking at it.
I'll make a motion to approve. So do you have staff comments?
No, second.
Have a motion to approve in two seconds. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, submitted for final plat approval. Item A, Spence acre subdivision, the item number is 14-2027, one lot on 1.99 acres, zoned residential low density. Located along Jones Road, Steve and Darlene Spence are the applicants. This request includes waivers for the fire hydrant requirements and off-site soils. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Jones Road. You can see on the plan on your screen as well as in your agenda materials, it's on the south side of Jones Road. The applicants are proposing to subdivide about two acres of property from an existing seven-acre tract to allow their daughter to construct a home. The original plan was really to deed the entire seven acres to their daughter, but the loan program that they're using, without going just a whole lot of detail, when it's all said and done, we allow about two acres of property to be included with the loan. So therefore, this is why the plat is coming before you. Now, the reason, or the fact that they're only allowed to subdivide the two acres off, their soils, as you can see, is a little further down here on the remainder of the seven acres. They need an access to that and easement to allow them to use the soils in this area, as well as the fact that they're, the water line in this area cannot support a fire hydrant, so they are asking for waivers to both of those requirements in the subdivision regulations. The applicant is present, Ms. Darlene Spence. She'll be happy to answer any questions, or myself, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
So for the soils, that's primary and secondary?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're both off. Like I said, they were originally supposed to do the entire seven acres, but Ms. Spence and I have talked a number of times about this, and she may want to elaborate a little bit more as to the whole, all the reasons, but...
Ms. Spence and him live in lot one, correct?
I think they live, well, no, this is, well, this will be the area, lot one will be the area that they'll be tracking. I think this is the rest of their property.
Okay.
Around here. Now, I will say that most of the comments have been addressed. There is one that still needs to be taken care of after you look at the plat. The note that they put on there for the waiver has something on there about the fire hydrant waiver, but I don't see anything on here about the soils waiver, so they would just need to add that on there. That, that's relatively minor, but just wanted to make sure that that was part of the comment.
Name and address, please.
Darlene Spence, and we live at 7309 Midland Road.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, this back part, as Mr. Demosi was saying, the 7.22 acres, our full intention
The note that they put on there for the waiver has something on there about the fire hydrant waiver, but I don't see anything on here about the soils waiver. So they would just need to add that on there. That, that's relatively minor, but, uh, just wanted to make sure that that was part of the comment.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Darlene Spence, and we live at seventy-three oh-nine Midland Road.
Thank you. Comments?
Well, this back part, as Mr. Demosi was saying, the seven point two-two acres, our full intention was for our daughter to take the seven point two acres and build her home on it. But she has received a USDA ARD loan to build her home. And because of the stipulations of that loan, she cannot use that much property. Long story, but she cannot have that much property. So we, um, have cut down and cut down and cut down. And the, actually, the minimum amount of property she can have with the rural development loan is one point nine nine acres. So, um, I have worked with Mr. Demosi, um, the surveyor, um, the soil, uh, site guys. We have looked at everything we could do to get in the road frontage, water, the whole nine yards. And this is the best that we could come up with. So we just asked that you would allow her to build on this one point nine nine acres and whatever adjustments we need to make for her to do so, we will, we'll do that.
What's the future of the other five acres?
The remainder?
As I said, the full intent of these seven acres was for that to be hers. However, in her contract that she signs, she can only sign a contract with the one point nine nine acres.
So in other words, she's gotta maintain the rest of it.
She does.
It could be gifted, right? It could be gifted at some point in time.
After her contract is signed and after her home is built, yes. Um, and then it's a family land, there's a total of, right at ninety acres. Um, and she was given the opportunity to choose from Midland Road up through Jones Road in the back, what she wanted. And of course, she chose the one section of the land that is absolutely the furthest point away from us as possible, so... Her brother, on the other hand, says he's building in the back door, so I don't know.
I'm sure you've jumped through enough hoops and you're tired of jumping through hoops. I'll make a motion we approve it.
Second, second on that motion.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Have a motion to approve and a second. That includes the note that Doug, uh, made. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
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 Opposition? Motion carries, thank you. Number nine submitted for site plan approval. Item nine A, Verizon Cellular Tower Site. The item number is fourteen dash three zero one-two. New construction of a hundred and forty-four foot monopole tower that includes the height of the lightning rod with accessory structures, it structures, which includes, um, equipment and shelter and generator. On twenty-eight point two-two acres, zoned residential medium density, located at thirty-one thirty-three Joe Brown Road. Verizon Wireless by Falk and Foster Real Estate Incorporated, applicant.
Easy for you to say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this property, as you stated, is located along, uh, Joe Brown Road, it's located on the south side. Uh, actually, this and the next two applications are all Verizon Towers, same applicant. Uh, the applicants received special exception approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals at their May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting to construct a cellular tower on the property. Uh, this tower will be constructed with one carrier, but does have the ability to accommodate three additional carri- carriers as co-locations. Uh, as far as the comments are concerned, we didn't have just a whole lot of comments on these. The comments have been addressed to the extent that they can at this point. There's still on a couple of sites waiting, uh, some official documentation from the FAA in order, uh, you know, their height determinations and those things. Uh, Mr. Jim LaPan is here, he can speak a little more to that. Uh, it's nothing that you need to, uh, hold up approval for, I don't think. If it's, if approval is conditioned on these sites, uh, uh, just subject to us receiving all of the required information before building permits are issued, I think that's, that'll be more than sufficient. So, well, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Twenty-eight acres, what else could go on that acreage?
Well, it's zoned for residential use. So, I mean, if they wanted to subdivide property and make it a, like a subdivision or something like that, uh, of course, they could certainly do that. Uh, whatever else would be allowed in the ordinance as far as, you know, uses by right or special exceptions would be fine. Uh, of course, they'd have to come through the plating process and the site plan process for anything. And these easements would all have to be shown on there. But, uh, to my knowledge, there's no other development, uh, intentions for any of these sites at this point.
And with it just being site plan approval, the neighbors don't know about this, right?
Well, they received a public hearing notice from the Board of Zoning Appeals that this was, but as far as this being a site plan, you know, we don't do any mail-outs or anything like that for site plans.
Do you know, was there any opposition at the VCA?
For this, I don't recall, I don't think I was actually, Mr. LaPan, you were there.
Yes, I am Jim LaPan from Falk and Foster. The only opposition we had was one gentleman who really wished that the tower had been on his property and was annoyed about it. He was a next-door neighbor.
Was that this one, or was that, I thought that was a different site?
That was a different site. It was one of the three sites. That's the only opposition we had, uh, at all. And, uh, that really was kinda sour grapes, but it was, he wanted it and he didn't get it, so... But no, no, there were no public outcry about any problems with the towers.
Do you have any idea how close it is to the next residential structure?
Uh, yes, that should be, uh, set forth on the, on your drawings there. Um, we did submit a large set of construction drawings in association with our plans. This particular one, Leanna, I'll take a glance at it. It's a fairly large, uh, parcel and it comes down off that, um, Joe Brown Road, I believe it is. And it, it's, sets down in...
As far as to the nearest structure, Ms. Allen, I'm not exactly sure if it says on here to the nearest structure. Now, as I recall, all three of these sites, the tower was not farther that it would go over the property line. You know, it was set back farther than the height of the actual tower or right at the tower. So even if it fell straight over, which most of these towers aren't engineered to do, they're engineered more to crumple upon themselves, uh, it would stay on its property itself. It would not actually go across property lines.
I'm glad you brought up collapsing, that really wasn't what I was even thinking about, but no, I'm glad you did. I just know from a, a resale standpoint, from the surrounding property owners, living near a cell tower can hurt them. And so that's part of the reason why I was just curious about visibility from their structure to the cell tower. I mean, it's one thing if you build in houses after the tower's there, it's when the tower comes in after the houses, so...
I understand. And, uh, and, you know, certainly, w- we're not going backwards in the cell tower world.
Right.
We're, we're, we're going to have cell towers as going forward. And that's why we are very careful to comply with the laws that the legislature has passed here. And, um, we, we suggest that, that the, the legislature understood that there would be residences in the vicinity of this when the zoning board of deals allowed this site. Uh, they did so with the full knowledge that there was a possibility that someone could build a house after this tower is approved and constructed. And so I, um, there are some, also some federal regulations that, that do, that do take that off the table here. Um, we, we are concerned about not, about being good neighbors. One of the reasons is that we set it down back off in the woods and we also provided a screening. Let's say that, that the, um, the landlord, we, we don't own all the land, we just lease one section of it. If the landlord were to, to cut the trees down, we are still landscaping around the base so that you're not gonna hide a, a tall, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and ninety-foot tower, I can't hide that. But on the other hand, you can hide the, the ugly-looking buildings and the, the fence with the barbed wire and all that. You can hide all that and we, we've done that, yeah.
I will say too, Ms. Allen, uh, when you look at your agenda, uh, there's the, uh, the location map in there, this does show location of structures. Uh, that tower location, of course, is approximate, but it's about where the tower is proposed to go. From the tower itself to this property line, it's about three hundred and fifty-five feet. And then there are some existing homes along Timberlake Drive right to the west over here, it looks like. But it looks like it'd probably be another maybe fifty, sixty feet. It's hard to tell by looking at this. So you're probably talking right around four hundred feet or so in the nearest structure.
Any other questions?
Make a motion. We're gonna do them one to ten?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. This is the second of three, item B. Verizon Cellular Tower Site, the item number is fourteen dash three zero one three. Uh, new construction on a hundred and sixty-foot monopole on seventeen acres, zoned residential low density at six oh six eight Williams Road. Verizon Wireless by Falk and Foster Real Estate is the applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, as I stated earlier, these, uh, are all the, the same applicant for these three towers. Uh, this one's located on the north side of Williams Road. Uh, again, special exception approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals at that same meeting, May fourteenth, for, to construct the cellular tower. A- as with the other tower, this tower will also have the ability to accommodate three other characters as co-locations. Again, the same comments that we had regarding just the documentation regarding FAA clearance and all that. Uh, you can see this is the location right here. There is an existing residence just right down, right here, you can see on this plan. Uh, it looks like this setback here, again, is about a hundred and sixty-five feet. I would estimate this to be closer to maybe somewhere between two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet, between the tower and its existing residence. But again, with the fact that it's a hundred and sixty-foot, uh, even if, I mean, just from a clearance standpoint, uh, it falls well within our, our guidelines for that. But, uh, this shows the existing residence on the adjacent property. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, Mr. LaPan is available as well.
Doug, what's our height restriction?
We don't necessarily, for cell towers, the way we handle them under our new ordinance, we don't necessarily have a height restriction. Now, the, the height restriction in the zone district just itself is thirty-five feet. But when they come to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a cell tower, we break it down as far as height is concerned. If it's within, depending on the district and the height, determines what process they have to go through. If it's in a residential area, it pretty much has to go through special exception regardless. But like in commercial or industrial areas, it could be within, say, a hundred feet of a height and it wouldn't have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they could do that by right. So regarding cell towers, we handle those a little bit differently, but the overall height limitation in that district is thirty-five feet.
So you said, um, was it the FAA that's looking at these to be approved or something, or...
Right, the FAA, they, they do a determined, make, basically it's a determination to make sure there's no airports within so many miles, uh, that they're not gonna be in, and the tower's not gonna be in any flight paths and things like that. So there's a determination that comes from that.
And the closest residence that you pointed out is owned by the same person who owns the land that's being leased?
I think this is actually on an adjacent property.
Where it says owners, it's Mr. Conger owns both parcels.
Okay, well, I guess he does, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Well, these have a, a strobe light or light on all these?
If they're, Mr. LaPan can handle that a little easier prior to night, 'cause I think if, if it's required by the FAA, but, uh, Mr. LaPan, you probably wanna address it.
None of these towers reach the height required, that requires a light, a light. That's two hundred feet. And, uh, these are all one, one eighty, one ninety.
One ninety-nine or under.
One ninety-nine or under. There's no, not, not an accident that it's under two hundred feet there. So it's, it's, at night, it's not, it's not, we don't have a ugly blinking light there.
It, it will have a little, small light of some sort, or it will not?
No, it won't have any, any lighting, no, no.
So a small plane that hits a small tower.
Just small red.
Small red.
Flying that low, then you've got your night vision goggles on.
Yeah, so that small plane's flying that low. I think they have other things to worry about.
It'd be drone, I think.
Doug, on the, on the very last attachment, you, we've got some DuPont fire safety material. Yes, all these particular buildings are protected by fire, correct?
Well, based on, that's why we requested that information.
Okay. But it, does it require, this, it wouldn't be a water sprinkler, this would be a chemical type?
That's correct, it would be electrical.
You don't need any water run to these buildings?
No, no.
Other questions? Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. The third, which is item C, Verizon Cellular Tower Site, the item number is fourteen dash three zero one four. New construction of a hundred ninety-nine-foot monopole tower on ninety-four point five acres, zoned residential medium density, located at, uh, thirty-one fifty-eight Armstrong Valley Road. Verizon Wireless, Falk and Foster Real Estate.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is the third of the three cell towers that we have for your consideration today. As you stated, it's a hundred ninety-nine-foot monopole, which includes the lightning rod with accessory structures. Uh, as you can see, it's on the west side of Armstrong Valley Road as well as really the north side of Whiteus Road, which is the location of this tower. Again, their special exception approval was received from the Board of Zoning Appeals at their May fourteenth meeting. Uh, this tower will also be able to accommodate three additional carriers as co-locators. Uh, again, the same comments in regards to the documentation from the FAA that we would need to see. Uh, but with that, uh, I don't really have any other comments, so, uh, be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Those, I'm assuming those are all existing trees that are around the building?
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a wooded area, so...
Ninety-five acres is a lot. Any future plans for that as well?
None that I'm aware of at, at this time. Uh, I have not had any conversations really with the applicants, uh, who own, they all, really, they own or the property. At this time, I don't think they have any other plans. Again, if there were something that were brought in, uh, it would be, had to come through our processes, but again, nothing that I'm aware of at this point.
Understand this has been kind of used for farmland, hay, that type of thing? Probably will continue to be used for that, po- potentially?
Well, this, this tower's not gonna interfere with it. It's good, it's a good neighbor for hay.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
It's pretty much open land where this was at.
And it, it's, it's going to have a screening around the base, as I described in the other one. And, uh, we have, you know, submitted a plan, a landscaping plan of, of that, because of that.
I'm just curious, um, who maintains your landscaping and your grounds?
That will be a contractor hired by Verizon to do that.
And that's all they do is go out to all your cell tower places?
Verizon has incredible variety of contractors in all parts of this. It is, it is, um, this is something that is important to Verizon to be good neighbors.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I assure you that that's, that's not gonna be a problem.
Right.
We, they know that when we approve this on our own land, it has to be on our land, so we have control over it. And, uh, because of that, we know that's our, not our own, our leased area. And we know that, that, that's our obligation and they're, they're gonna follow through with it.
How often would a facility like this actually be visited by a human being from Verizon?
That, I, I don't have an answer for you on that.
I mean, probably rare, right?
I'm sure there must be some type of a, of an inspection schedule, uh, for that. There's a very expensive equipment there. And we have fencing that needs to be checked and see if it's maintained, barbed wire on the top of it. We, we wanna make sure that it's, it's a safe and secure facility.
Sure.
And everything's maintained in good, good condition. Because the watertight nature of those structures is very important because we've got a lot of really expensive equipment in there. So I, I am, I'm confident that there will be an inspector that will come by, just make sure that that's, that very expensive stuff is in good shape, as well as the, as the plantings.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Uh, I believe Doug, uh, and the staff has, um, uh, an additional site plan that they wanna add to our agenda and I think it's very minor, uh, but with that, we'll need to suspend the rules, uh, for that to happen. So I need a motion? To suspend, suspend the rules and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, the plan that you have before you, it's the Creek Site Subdivision Pavilion Plan. Uh, it's just a, uh, two or three sheets here that they have. Essentially, this is common area in the Creek Spence subdivision and they're wanting to put up a pavilion as part of that. Uh, normally, structures of this size don't require planning commission approval because this is really the only structure on the property. It's more of a principal structure, which is why it's being brought before you. Uh, we had a number of comments on this. Uh, for the most part, uh, they've, they've handled those. Uh, the one comment that I do wanna point out is you can see on the plan right here, it labels the floodway. However, based on the information that we have and looked at, it looks like it's not in the floodway. I spoke with Mr. Reed prior to the meeting, he said he, this thinks that this is just mislabeled as floodway. It should be actually flood plain, flood plain. So, uh, they will take care of that. Uh, besides that, again, this is, is, is in pretty good order. It's just a, a very minor site plan, we just thought we'd bring it to your attention today.
Picnic pavilion type of thing?
And it'll be an open-air pavilion, it won't have enclosed, it won't be enclosed.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Staff reports, let me say that our next meeting, unless I've got the wrong date, is scheduled for Monday, July fourteenth, six P.M. And that will be over at the courthouse. Uh, any other, uh, reports or business, Doug?
Uh, just a, a quick announcement. Um, the State Planning Conference this year is gonna be in Nashville. It's gonna be August the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, I think, last week of August. Generally, we have these, uh, sessions and these conferences, we move them around the state. It was actually supposed to be in Chattanooga this year, but, uh, for reasons I won't get into, it's gonna be in Nashville this year. Uh, we are, at this point, we're trying to plan on providing maybe some training for planning commissioners, what we're calling like a nuts and bolts approach to planning commissions, as well as having, uh, Ms. Bridget Jones from Cumberland Region tomorrow do kind of a more regional approach to, uh, some of the initiatives going on around the state, uh, through, uh, the different areas. So, uh, we're working on a little program, if you will, that some of your planning commissioner may be interested in. It'll be a nominal cost, but it'll be something that we can take care of. I'll have some more information hopefully at the next meeting for you on that. But if you could just kinda keep that in mind, uh, the training that we're talking about would be Thursday afternoon and we're gonna be having it at the Music City Center. Uh, I don't know if anybody's been to the, the new facility there in downtown Nashville. We've taken a, a look around, it's very, very impressive, we're very excited about the conference. But again, we'll have some more information about, about that for you here in, uh, next meeting.
Last week of August.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That Thursday's the twenty-eighth?
Yes. That would be the day of the plan. Now, we're, we're trying to, uh, kinda package it as there's some other sessions we think some planning commissioners may be interested in as well. Uh, so, most of the sessions would be probably Wednesday and Thursday. There may be a Friday one and I don't remember, but it seems like most of them are Wednesday and Thursday. But again, we'll have some more information for you on that at the next meeting. So if it's something you'd be interested in, uh, like I said, it'll be fairly nominal cost, but we'll be able to help you, we'll be able to provide for that, for you.
Anything else?
Uh, no, just, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and then we'll, uh, go ahead and, you know, go and take a few minute recess and then, you know, break and then go into our, uh, training session with Mr. Larry Farley. Uh, Mr. Ken Honeycutt is here, are here to, uh, talk through some of the new aspects of the, of the fire code as well as, uh, representatives from CUD are, are present as well, so...
Time, how much time are you gonna need, Ken, Larry?
I don't have any questions, y'all.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We're, we're adjourned.